Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
Looks like we got several items today.
Well, we have a couple. I have the esteemed group sitting behind me that you all know is going to get up and give us an update on Project Wichita. And then I have agenda review and anything else the commissioners want to talk about today.
Sounds good.
All right. I think Evan's going to start. Evan, are you going to go first?
I'll get it.
Okay.
Very good. Scott, welcome.
Thanks to everybody being with us today. I'm here, my name is Scott Schwindeman. I'm one of the co-chairs of Project Wichita. See, most of you are looking through the brochure that we produce with the information. We wanted to come today and kind of give you an overview of the process and what we did with Project Wichita. Answer any questions you may have. So, I'm just going to kind of start out with, you know, what is Project Wichita? Where did it come from? And you'll see that Project Wichita was really a community engagement process that we started on about a year ago today. We actually launched it January 31st at the Chamber's Annual Chairman's Luncheon last year. We gathered this information or decided to go through this process based on a lot of the city-to-city visits that some of you in this room had joined us on as we went to various cities and saw how they drove not only their economic development but also their social and other needs that they had in those communities. And through that, we saw at a very high level, they had all done some sort of a communication with the community to find out exactly what did they feel the priorities were, maybe not necessarily to one particular group. And so, I was one of the four co-chairs that was asked to head up that group and start going through that questioning process with our community to find out really what do they see as the really important needs. And as we did that, we gathered, and Evan and Misty will talk about it, about 100 different companies came together and we had about 3,400 people actively participate to get it done with a total of about 14,000 of our citizens in the region actually helping us develop this plan as we went forward. We'd like to thank, you know, the county here because you had a lot of your people participated in those think tanks and those discussions to actually lead where we went to and in the findings that we'll talk about here later today. And your investment in our process too. You were one of the major investors and again, thank you for that investment in this process. When we started this out, I was trying to explain to people, you know, what made Project Wichita different than the other processes that were going on in the city? Breg and our talent recruitment and everything. And I always use the analogy of altitude like a plane. And this project here was at the 100,000-foot level. We're just trying to see what did the citizens believe were the most important things. We weren't necessarily trying to say, here's the project, we need to go after. We believe that will come from this direction and then will disseminate throughout various groups in the community to actually drive the initiatives that our community is asking for. And as we went through it, I will say as one of the co-chairs, I was very surprised at some of the things that rose very much so to the top. Airfares, as you'll see in your report, was one of the most important things to most people in this community, which really surprised me that that rose as high as it did. But as you look at the other concerns, you'll see why airfares became that big talking point. But as we go through this data today, kind of look at it, ask any questions you may have. Misty can answer all those questions for you back here. She's looked at all the data points. And we've looked at tens of thousands of pieces of data in this. Thanks to WSU for their help on this to actually take and culminate this. This process was done by a lot of people, a lot smarter than I am, to figure out where we need to go and what those processes are. So, without further ado, I'm going to ask Evan and Misty, come on up. They're going to kind of go through the data. I'll come back and kind of talk to you about our, some of our main initiatives and our vision statement. And then we'll close out with how we're going to take some action on this. So, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Well, Evan, Misty.
Thank you so much. And I reiterate Scott's thanks of the commission and the county for not just the staff involvement throughout the process, but you were one of the leading voices in this project to get it off the ground. You know, when we were talking to private investors, they said, is the county involved? And it made it a heck of a lot easier to say, yes, absolutely, they're on board. And to really see that this would emerge to become a private partner, a private-public partnership. So, thank you for not only the time today but your leadership throughout all of this. As Scott mentioned, there were four volunteer co-chairs. We wanted to really make sure that this was a process that was undertaken by the community and for the community. And having these volunteer co-chairs who have poured out more time and lent us more credibility than we would have ever expected, really helped us to set the tone. So, of course, Aaron Bastian with Fidelity Bank, Debbie Gann, retired Spirit Aerosystems Executive, Scott Schwindeman, who you just heard from, and Justin White, all bringing different experiences, different backgrounds, different perspectives to this process and really helped us from a staff and from a tactical strategic standpoint, really set the direction for us. And, you know, in terms of that direction, it was really important that we would go and hear from all corners of the community and not just the familiar voices in the community. That we would stretch beyond the city limits and that we would see truly that as the region goes, so goes Wichita and so goes Sedgwick County and vice versa. And so, really helped us set some key directions and really just said, follow the desire, follow the community's desire here and where it leads, it leads. And so, truly appreciate their leadership and investment. As Scott also mentioned, we also had a vision team comprised of about 94 organizations. And you can see through this list, and I should tell you, there's a bunch of information in your reports, but all of this information is online too. So, if you miss a comment, certainly reach out to us, but all this stuff is online too. About 94 different organizations and you've got the city and the county, but you also got regional voices like Newton and Eldorado and the mayor of Mount Hope and folks from throughout the region together with large for-profit, so big four employers, Textron, Spirit, Cargill and Coke have been involved in this process, together with the smaller associations, neighborhood groups and smaller groups speaking real specifically for a particular area of our community. And so, these folks were helping us reach different communities throughout, helping us respond to and process the data. Scott talks about the guiding principles and vision. This is the team that helped define those things in light of that information and then broke up into different groups, as we'll talk about in a second, to define what these action plans are. We wanted to build something not just that produced information, because information just that sits on the shelf doesn't serve anybody, but information that translates into action plans and helps us to steward the momentum that's here. We don't want to just acknowledge that there's momentum, we want to take advantage of it in the region. And so, they were really the guiding voices that helped us put that large-scale community information into particular action plans that we'll go through later on today. The process had three major phases. And the first one was listening. And this was the, I think it's a phase of this process, but it's also a posture of this process in the sense that this is a continual listening, much like your roles on the commission as representatives. You are continually listening to your districts, you're continually listening to your constituents, and I think we want that to be a posture that marks this. But in terms of the process itself, two major focus pieces here. One, we hosted focus groups in the early spring of about 3,800 folks. And so, Misty and her team devised a really innovative way to attack focus groups in the sense that we would host them, but we'd also train other folks to host them. And we also, they also built a DIY focus group context where you could have a dinner party and you could host a focus group and report the data. And I was, you know, interested to see how that turned out in the sense that would you just have people by themselves in their basement reporting this information? But when we broke down the data, you had an average of six or seven folks involved in those DIY focus groups, which is just a terrific opportunity for us to get deeper into the community and hear more from the community as it went on. And from those focus groups, we had eight broad topics emerged that we'll discuss here in just a second. And then we used that to form a survey of about 50 questions, 42 of which were substantive and then six of which were kind of vision and perspective-based. Misty will talk about those. We'll get all that data back, over 2 million data points, and work with this vision team to see what these commonalities are, see what the major issues are that emerge. And then that would provide the basis for our action plans. And now, we're in the share phase. Much like what we're doing today, we want this plan to be common ownership, common vision. So, we're taking this back out to the community where we started and to explain a little bit of what we heard from the community so we can gather that common vision and gather that common ownership. As we mentioned, we, this is a regional process. So, we really took a 10-county, about an hour in every direction from the center of Wichita, and were able to host focus groups in all of these different places. It was really interesting just from my own personal experience to see what issues echoed, you know, when you're talking to somebody in McPherson and they say, you know, gosh, we got to do something about the river. And I'm thinking, okay, what river flows through here? You know, what are they thinking about? And I asked them to clarify and they said, no, I'm talking downtown Wichita, that's our river, that's where we go, you know, on the weekends. You know, we don't want to live next door, but we want access to those things. And just to see the mindset from folks, you know, whether it be McPherson or Newton or Eldorado or Hutch, and to see that there is this collective desire to step towards some of these common issues and common opportunities. So, that's about the region that we've got here. As we mentioned, just under, just over 239 different focus groups completed with 3,800 focus group participants, which is a really healthy number. And in these focus groups, we were not looking for consensus or agreement. Misty might talk about this, but they were looking for this thematic analysis. What are those issues that were mentioned the most that rose to the top so that we could get more information on those issues through the survey? Out of those focus groups, eight broad topics emerged. So, these were the things that we heard the most of. Misty, do you want to jump in and talk just a little bit about that and kind of how we got that information, what it means?
Good morning, Commissioners. Leadership from Sedgwick County, thank you for having me here today. I'm Misty Brecker from Wichita State and I'm going to go over the data and statistic points and make this really fun for you for the next five minutes. We did the focus groups, as Evan said. These came out of these 239 different conversations that happened around our region. When we brought these eight topics together, we were looking for not only frequency, meaning how much was this topic talked about, but also how intense was that conversation? How much did it make up the conversations that we're having? So, for example, Kellogg, finishing Kellogg was mentioned in over 95% of the focus groups that were had, but it was made up more than less than 1% of the conversation. Versus, education was mentioned in more than 95% of the focus groups, but the conversation around education took up 30% of the conversation. So, we knew that was really important to the people in the focus groups. So, that's how we came up with these eight topics. Not only were they mentioned the most frequently, they took up the most amount of the conversation. So, that, from those 239 focus groups, that's how we came up with these eight broad topics, which led us then into how we would design the survey instrument. And we had almost 14,000 people respond to the survey. So, that's incredible. When we looked at other communities and other regions who had done this type of survey work, we saw somewhere between 3,000 to 5,000 responses on a survey, which we would have been excited about, honestly. To get to almost 14,000 is an incredible number and it's because of our vision team and folks like you who help spread the word that we need voices involved with this. So, we had such high numbers that we were able to go into geographical areas and look at how people think about things differently, demographic information, looking at race and gender, socioeconomics, age differences. And so, it's just a great data set that we can continue to use for planning for our region in the future. The first questions, as Evan mentioned, really talked about vision and perspective. So, where's the big picture? Where do we want to go and what are we concerned about? And what we heard is really consistent with what we have done with other surveys and that people want to leave things better than they found it. So, how are we making it better for that next generation? How will children have chances to succeed with almost 80% of the people saying that has to be the focus of our work? How do we move that forward?
So, who are the 4% that don't think that their children might have a chance to succeed?
You're in public service, you may have encountered these.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a different views on what our roles are in life, right? And so, we do see that come up in almost every survey, that there's some folks that may not have that broad community perspective there. So, moving on to the question on opportunities to help themselves, again, almost 80% want to create the future for people who have opportunities can have the chance to succeed. And then the last one that I'll share, the next one was on diversity and inclusion, changing demographics, whether that's with age or whether that is with race. We know that the values of diversity and inclusion are going to be important for our region to be successful in the future with over three-quarters of the folks saying that that was important to them. And finally, probably the highest one that we heard was this idea that if our region is going to be able to keep and attract that next generation, we have to be willing to change. And I think that was kind of the overriding theme that came out of a lot of this conversation was the willingness to change. And so, that really helped form a lot of the work moving forward. So, on to the survey data. I am not going to go through all the bullet points for you, I promise, but just so that you are aware of how this survey works, every item on here was already an important issue that came out of the focus groups. These were, these are items people already cared about and that we knew that they were important. What we were trying to do is to figure out the top ones, right? How essential were these, these critical issues to move forward? So, in looking at this, if you think of a five-point scale, five being the highest, the blue bar is the essential items. And then the red bar is the essential and very important items put together. And so, that is, that is how the survey information is presented to you. And if you look at the top 20, which we have in the presentation, all 42 items are listed on the website, you'll see that there's a real overriding theme about talent, right? About what we need to do to make sure that we have a future workforce and a population that can be a part of that. And so, items around education, so whether that is making sure that children are ready for work, whether that means making sure there's opportunity in higher education, whether that means keeping our college graduates here locally, those are all some of the top ideas that came out of that, as well as creating opportunities. And so, whether that is related to socioeconomic, whether that is related to gender, whether that is related to race, making sure there's opportunities for people to have a chance to increase their socioeconomic status through jobs. And the last part of that, I would just say is quality of place, that we know that's important for people to come here and to stay here, so making sure that we have this quality of place there. So, I'll be glad to answer questions if you have anything specific on these individual items, but that's kind of a general summary of how that played out.
Number one.
And the number one issue was creating opportunities to retain college graduates. And that was whether you looked at it as five as essential in the blue or if you put highest importance and essential together, keeping our college graduates and making sure that they have opportunities to be successful here. The other one that I'd want to mention is on this slide is was ranked number six overall as far as essential and critical role that the county plays in this, is the quality of mental health services available. This came up as the number six in the survey, number 10 is when you put together essential and highest priority. And we'll talk about it more in the, when we got to the planning stages, this just really seemed to resonate as a critical issue that we come together on as a region.
Good, because that's right at the top of our, let's say, the agenda too.
Yeah. So, there's a lot of things that are coming together with this.
We'll circle back around on that before we're done.
Yep. So, Scott, do you want to talk about guiding principles?
So, with all this data that we found, to make this a living document, continue it on into the future, because that's really the plan of it. I don't know that we mentioned it, really we were looking at a 10-year plan here as to what the community is asking for. We thought we better get some guiding principles and we better have a vision statement. So, as we move forward and other things we'll add today, you know, our number six, the mental health is very important to the county, but five years from now, something else may be important. So, what are those guiding principles that we'll use to keep us on the rails and not veer off and go in a different direction? And so, with the guiding principles, we have invest in ourselves is one of those. We always have to remember that everybody has to invest in this area. If you live here, you need to invest in this area. It's not about what you can take, but you also have to figure out what it is you can give back. And that's not just from a public perspective, that's also private, that's also not-for-profit. How do we give back and invest in ourselves to make this area a really good area to live and work and play in? We want to be connected in the community. And by that, what we mean is you saw we did a 10-county region when we looked at it here. We want all those regional players to work together to make this area a very good place, again, to live and play in. I found it very interesting, Misty kind of talked to us, Evan, about when we talked to people that were from McPherson, from Eldorado, from Wellington, this process really helped them, it seemed to me, to understand that we are a region working together for economic prosperity and quality of life. It's not about one individual area. And they really embraced that for the first time, because I've had conversations in my timeline with these places that, you know, it was all about what could happen in their town, they didn't really care about it. At this moment, we have enough energy going that everybody wants to participate to make the region good. And that's, if the region's strong, we will all succeed. We need to have that future generation mindset, Misty talked about that. You know, talent retention, we also have to have talent attraction. We've got to bring talent here. There is a workforce shortage across the whole country. We are not unique in the fact that we have a workforce shortage here. So, we've got to figure out how do we keep our kids here and how do we bring in other kids to fill those jobs that we so desperately need to have filled here so we can grow. And finally, it's boldly seize opportunities. I'm a lifelong Wichita, I've lived here all my life, I've watched things happen, grow, build. I always tell the story that, you know, my dad was integral in building Century 2. And I remember the conversations home when I'm a little kid about, you know, everybody wanted to keep the Forum, which was the original convention center before we had Century 2. And that argument that went on. And here we are 50 years later and we're back in the same argument that I remember as a little kid, I heard. And they were bold at that time. They took on and they built Century 2. It was a very bold and ambitious plan. And I'm not saying that that's where we got to go, but we've got to be bold in our decisions to move forward, because if we don't, we're not going to have that quality of place. We're not going to have the things that we need to attract our talent and our youth and more importantly, businesses to locate here in Wichita. So, with that, those were our four guiding principles that we're going to use to keep ourselves grounded as we move forward. The other thing is our vision statement. And here, you know, you can see on the line, is here in the heart of the heartland, we work together to create a vibrant region, is what we're talking about. Where people choose to live because we bravely seize opportunity. We must gather those opportunities that are inbound. And we champion change because change is hard, provide pathways to success so our people and our businesses are successful, and welcome differences and invest in our future. We need to really remember this, with whatever we do going forward, is to kind of look back at this vision statement and it's what we're doing, does it match up with what this vision statement is here for us? And if it doesn't, maybe we need to question, is that really core to what we're trying to do here? We need a vibrant region. I have the opportunity to work with some companies that are looking to locate to Wichita. I'm amazed at the number of businesses that are looking to bring their business to this region. It's a weekly thing that I get a call from some manufacturing businesses that says, hey, we're looking to locate in Wichita, tell us about that environment in Wichita. We need to really seize these opportunities right now because people are looking to move. And so, I'm really excited to be a part of this process and how we're going to move forward. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Misty and to Evan and let them kind of give you more of the data and get into some of the action plans that we think are very vital to move us forward.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. And it goes without saying, if there are questions that pop into your mind, certainly we'll save some time at the end for that, but if there are live questions that we can interact with, don't hesitate to share those. As Scott mentioned, and as we mentioned earlier, we took all that, the survey responses and distilled them down. We had eight broad topics coming out of the focus groups. We wanted to distill that down as well, because one of the potential difficulties of working on a plan like this is that you end up with an inch-deep, mile-wide plan that you're trying to do everything, you're trying to hug a mountain and it just, it doesn't, it doesn't work. So, we wanted to distill that down as much as we could and we did to five key focus areas. And many of these areas, I would imagine, are things that you guys are working on on a daily basis, that you see expressions of throughout in your service. And the first was talent. And when we say talent, we mean people, we mean human capital in need. So, across the workforce spectrum, from executive to technical and across that, we need more people to help fill some of these roles and keep some of the young folks that we have invested in. You know, it's several conversations with Scott saying that we pour so much as a community into our kids and to lose them to other regions and other communities is not just something that makes life less fun here, but it's also, you know, from just a purely pragmatic standpoint, you're losing the benefit of your investment to these kids. And so, we saw talent really come as one of the preeminent issues. I should mention that these five focus areas, then, we made five different focus teams of the vision team. So, about the 94 different organizations all had representatives on this team and they all split into these different groups. And they were led by community leaders. So, talent was led by Dominique Harris, Senior Business Development Analyst at Cargill. Lifelong learning was also something. So, when we talked about education, you know, it came up quite a bit, but, you know, education begins before you walk through the doors of a school for the first time and it persists long after you graduate. And so, what does it look like to take a comprehensive view of learning in our community? That was led by Stephanie Harder, Director of Communications and Public Affairs at Textron Aviation, also one of the co-chairs of the Business Education Alliance with the Greater Wichita Partnership. Economic prosperity, led by Kyle Blaisdell, Director of Business and Project Development at Conco Construction, really thinking through, you guys are familiar with Breg or the Regional Growth Plan as a really tactical opportunity to steward these things. This was looking at a broader, at a broader region too, or a broader altitude, incorporating that, but looking at other pieces as well. Strong communities and neighborhoods, led by Brandon Johnson, City Council Member of City of Wichita. And a special thanks to Tim Kaufman for being a really, really critical voice in that group throughout and wanted to make sure to recognize his leadership here today. And finally, quality of place, led by Matt McCallas, Chairman and CEO of Enterprise Bank. So, we'll go ahead and walk through these. You have all these in your reports as well as online and we won't try to drone on. We'll hit these initiatives and you'll see there are some broad initiatives and then some strategies to accomplish those initiatives. And I should say that, you know, this is not a, Project Wichita is not an organization of 100 different folks, you know, working together. It's community partnerships and it's organizations throughout the community who are stepping into these things. And so, you'll recognize some of the things on this list and you'll say, I think that organization is doing that. And we'd say, absolutely. And what we want to do is have some of these things on the action plan consistent with what other organizations are already doing so we can amplify that and take it into new contexts and regions, things like that. So, number one, as Scott mentioned, attraction, talent attraction, to implement initiatives that attract and grow talent to the greater Wichita region. The Greater Wichita Partnership has been working in this realm over the last year with the county's support. And so, they are launching very soon a talent marketing website. It's really complete with some innovative strategies to change some of the external perceptions. What we hear from business leaders is that it's, hey, it's pretty easy to sell my company, Textron or Cargill, you know, what we need help with is selling this community. And so, this is really based on helping to sell to outside voices, folks that might not be familiar with how great this region is and how much amazing stuff is happening here, to really help bridge that gap. And you'll see different strategies underneath that. One strategy sees the continuous, the support and amplification of Wichita Promise Move Model in Wichita Promise, so like WSU Tech and bringing in different folks, that's had a really successful start. And so, several of the things that we've identified throughout this process are, how do we continue to scale that? How do we grow that? That's a great idea. How do we get more energy behind it? Second, opportunities for retention and advancement, so creating and promoting opportunities for people to see themselves advancing and bridge the gap for mid-career talent. One of the things we saw in focus groups and Misty could speak to this a little bit too, is that folks, there's a perceived mid-career block here where you could come and get an early college, or early out-of-college job, but it's hard, you know, folks were struggling with, how do I advance in my career? And kind of that mid-career standpoint. And so, you know, a couple of these are designed with that in mind. Folks in their 30s and late 20s that are, have several years of professional experience, how do they imagine themselves growing here in the region? So, enhancing workforce development through mentoring and coaching, improving regional diversity and inclusion, particularly among women and minorities, and then supporting employers as they adapt to new and growing generations in the workplace through employer toolkits and just, you know, helping to understand what new and younger generations think about when they approach a job, because it's just a little bit of different mindset. And it's not good, it's not bad, it's just different. And so, how do we generationally translate some of those things in order to make a more welcoming and productive environment for the younger generations? So... So.
The next one was lifelong learning. And you can imagine the breadth of conversations that happen around education and lifelong learning. So this group was really challenged with what would be the most strategic type of investments as far as human resources and moving the region forward that we could do with lifelong learning. And they came down with really two broad areas. The first one is the idea of literacy wins. We know if children are reading at grade level by third grade, their trajectory for life is dramatically changed. And so if we came together as a region and really invested and were organized to leverage all the resources that are already out there on literacy to really have significant impact, we think that that would be something that would really have a lasting impact on our region. It's also something that is measurable. So we can tell by different school districts, whether those are private or public, whether or not children are on grade level by the time they get to third grade. So a lot of strategies around that, whether that's books in homes, whether that's getting volunteers to be in schools, whether that's education for parents. But the real focus on literacy and specifically at reading levels at third grade. So very targeted what they came up with, with the lifelong learning on that action. The second one with lifelong learning, really focused on how do we better leverage resources? Education, future for our children is the top issues that came out of both the focus groups and the surveys, right? So how, if we all feel this importance to do this, how do we work together better to make that happen? So the lifelong learning action plan on this one is really the idea of student success partnerships. How do we get businesses, nonprofits, community organizations, and schools, private and public, to work together in a more efficient and effective way?
One of the surprising things or encouraging would maybe be a better word for it was the amount of private sector interest in education initiatives and private sector companies that want to step toward some of these issues. Want to step toward literacy, want to step toward support of schools at a more, kind of a hyper-neighborhood level. And so we really, we're thinking through what models you can do to not just address things district-wide, but to perhaps sometimes make issues a little bit smaller so that you can have a community around those schools supporting those things. Because we really sensed from the private community a desire to step toward them.
So a couple of this focus is just changing how those connections happen and how those partnerships can more easily develop. And the last part of that is a real focus on work-based learning. So what are some pilot projects we can do so that students are not only getting credit, but getting paid? Whether that's at the high school level or at the college level to have that opportunity so they're on a career pathway already. So those are the focus on the lifelong learning. The next one is strong communities and neighborhood. And again, this is one where there are so many potential topics to focus on for this area. How do we narrow this down? And so the group really focused on two main areas. Was one, to make sure neighborhoods have connections to resources and to be able to make the plans that best fit their neighborhoods. And this is interesting because whether you're in Wichita or whether you are in Eldorado or Newton, this conversation of how do we make my neighborhood strong was important to everybody. And so how do we create tools to make that happen? Two main strategies, one is this idea of anchor institutions. How do we get an anchor institution, a larger institution to step forward and say, I'll take the lead for this neighborhood, right? I'll be the resource center for this neighborhood. Bringing in other partners to be able to reach out to that community and to be open for that community. So they have one place to go to connect with educational resources, employment resources, health, whatever is important for that community. So this is a successful model that's been done in a lot of regions across the country on something that the group could be replicated here. The second strategy is the toolkit idea that how can a community go in and assess what their needs are? And again, this is a model that we've used in the Fairmount neighborhood and had a lot of success in changing some of those perceptions related to crime, resources available, safety in our neighborhoods. And so really had a lot of support to move that forward. So initiative one is really strengthening communities through resources. The second part was health and safety. Again, huge topic areas in the group, based upon the survey, based upon what we heard in focus groups and based upon conversations going on in our community, really focused in on the mental health part of that. And so really looking at strategies to think about how we have better conversations and create more resources to address some of the mental health issues for our region. The other one was on the healthy foods. And that really is amplifying some of the work that's already being done with the Health and Wellness Coalition and other regional efforts that can be used to create more access for folks. But there's a lot of good things already happening there.
On the mental health piece, just jump in because I know that this is a prime issue for the commissioners here. And just to talk a little bit more about kind of what that looks like. We heard from a number of different folks that there are a lot of different mental health things happening. And have we come together to identify the two or three top symptomatic expressions of some of the mental health issues in the community? And how do we tackle those top issues? Realizing and understanding that mental health, you know, affects nearly every sector of someone's lives. But where are there the particular places where we as a community can come together and coalesce, private sector, public sector, to step towards some of these things? We've just been really encouraged by the meetings that we had, even just last week with DA Bennett and Wendy Hummel with the Sheriff's Office and Sheriff Easter, as well as Jennifer Wilson, formerly with Calm Care and now believe with the county. And really a sense of desire to step towards some of these issues. And we heard through the community that, you know, they, I was encouraged that mental health ranked number six because a lot of folks will see a homeless person on the street. But I think what this is telling us is that our community is able to translate to say that there are some issues that are underlying that, that it's not just homelessness, it's the mental health that's producing that. Or when we talk about addiction, that there, maybe there's some attempts to self-medicate there and that there's an underlying mental health issue. Or that perhaps with some of the crime, that there's some mental health dimensions to that. And that at the root of many of these things, there is underdeveloped mental health access or accessibility. And so we've been really encouraged by the focus that the county's taken and how that's expressed itself with DA Bennett and several folks like that. So there's a task force idea. And then there's a regional awareness campaign. And then finally, shooting big here with a modern regional state mental hospital here. One of the things that we've seen is that, you know, Osawatomie, if someone is going to Osawatomie to receive care, what you're doing is taking them out of their natural support structures with family and friends and relationships and churches. You're putting them in a place that's a little bit foreign. And having something that's within the community might be a better support mechanism for those folks. Sure. Economic prosperity. So the first initiative and the primary initiative here is growing jobs in existing businesses. And we do that through, you know, a few different ways. Business expansion, expansion of the businesses that are already here. Business attraction, so businesses that are not here, like Scott mentioned, that would want to relocate here. And then also the entrepreneurial growth that's so, so much a part of the fabric of our region so that we produce jobs and innovative opportunities through those. And so we mentioned the regional growth plan. You know, in this Project Wichita process, we weren't trying to step into places where other people are doing great work. And so with the county's support, the regional growth plan is launching very soon. And it's a very tactical, hundreds of pages of very specific economic development, job growth strategies. And the second piece here is the Fly Local campaign and how that affects economic development. We saw just last week or two weeks ago, the iFly Wichita campaign launched. And so it's, the goal is to increase ridership and to continue the trend of decreased airfares and more connectivity in the region. The second is develop and strengthen regional economic, entrepreneurialship ecosystems. And so we see a different entrepreneurial support mechanisms throughout the community. I think there's some room for those to fuse a little bit better and have a holistic approach at supporting entrepreneurs at the various stages, whether they be idea-based or scale, you know, scaling issues down the line. And really thinking through what the needs are in those support and how do we bring together the right folks to support those folks. The third initiative here is regional capacity for technology industry and technology talent. You know, reliance on technology is not an if, but a when and how much. And so as we see, particularly in the manufacturing realm, a greater reliance on technology, it means that we need to be thinking through the development of our workforce in ways that are just a little bit different. That those jobs aren't necessarily going away, but they're shifting into the different technology-dependent areas. And are we producing the type of talent that's ready for that shift? And are we trying to attract the jobs that allow for us to keep some of that economic value here? So you see an advocacy and awareness strategy for the continued growth and investment in the region's technological infrastructure. One great example of this is the flagship Kansas.Tech recent launch. It's a statewide tech council composed of several different tech leaders, private sector tech leaders in the community. And so they were emerging as a voice for the whole state and mostly rooted here in our region for that continued growth in technology. And then also increase our technology-based talent or location quotient in the technical term. We just need more people. It's a chicken or the egg issue. The jobs will come when the people are here and we'll get more people when the jobs are here too. And so we want both approaches here, where we're working with local institutions and programs to increase our tech talent. And this is not just something that's at the university level. This really spans the gamut here of education where you're talking in the realm of coder camp, weekend coder camps and six-week training courses that are really fruitful in this environment. Together with your PhD in software engineering, those types of things. So it's really across the spectrum. And then finally, increased economic impact of tourism. You know, there was a lot of conversation about the missing income or missing tourism impact in the region. And how, you know, just how vital those outside dollars are pouring in and supporting our core region. And as the Visit Wichita folks would say, these are folks that you don't have to pay fire and police and schools for and they're contributing into the community. And so, you know, the conversation shifted to developing core and regional infrastructure to allow the community to, over the course of the next 10 years, double our convention hosting capacity. And so, you know, that's hotels and convention space and supporting infrastructure, things like that. And then also a master plan for tourism and product gap analysis to really get hard figures on perhaps what we're missing out on and how we can step toward those things in particular. And then finally, quality of place. And one thing about quality of place is, you know, this ties really directly to talent. When we're talking about younger generation, when we broke down some of the data, when we're talking attractions and cultural investments in riverfront and downtown, you can really see the increased interest from younger survey respondents in these areas. And actually too, when you break down things like the river and cultural arts, you see a higher desire for minority communities too on some of these issues. There's a real desire, at least my experience has been, that there's a real desire for folks in our community to have a place to come and connect and to come and be together. And I think that's what we see when we see quality of place. Just defining quality of place a little bit, I think it's fair to say that this whole process is a quality of life process. And quality of place is what are those things that are unique and distinctive and contribute to the attractiveness of our region to current residents and future residents? So it's not just buildings, it's cultural investments too. And so three or five major initiatives here. The first is a world-class facility to highlight our exceptional performing arts. That that was something that was really supported by the community. The second, a state-of-the-art convention center to host local, regional, and national events. Again, as an economic impact engine and a spectacular gathering spot in the heart of the city, serving as a destination for all locals and visitors alike. You know, the idea of this, and this is again, a team led by Matt McCallis at Enterprise, you know, a park stretching along the river from 13th to Kellogg. And just this real green belt that serves as a regional gathering place and something where folks from all walks of life, all income levels, all places in the region can come together. And when we're having an event as a community, it's a no-brainer that you have it in this place where everyone can come together. And then fourth, a comprehensive and united plan to connect development. So, you know, as we think about things like performing arts centers and convention centers and, you know, green space like that, having a unified, comprehensive approach to answering those questions rather than a one-off approach. So that we think through, you know, our river and riverfront areas, really our regional core. And it's one of the greatest assets that we have in our community. And to think about that through an integrated framework. And then finally, a culture of celebrating community with signature events and attractions across the region. That just really stems again from this desire that we sense in the community to want to come together. Great expression of that is the, when they shut down Douglas a handful of months ago, 30,000 to 40,000 people come to walk the street. I mean, that's just an incredible number. And for something as simple as just coming together and walking the street. I think that's an expression of where that, where the community sits on those things. As we said, we're sharing this now with groups throughout. The desire is, we're going into more detail with you guys because this is, you know, these issues are much more pertinent to you on a day-to-day basis. But sharing the overall themes of this with the community and hearing back, is this, does this meet with what you perceive? Is this, is this important to your neighborhood or to your, to your business? And really getting that validation that we heard correctly. And also helping to share this vision throughout the community. There are several opportunities to be more involved. We will continue to reach out to your team and particularly the staff team to keep you guys abreast of all of the updates and continue the partnership that's been working so well this year. But I'll just kind of give you a handful of the next steps. So we're, right now, have established an advancement team to complement the co-chairs. About five or six different folks who are working in the region, again, coming on as volunteers to help push these initiatives forward. It's one thing to have a shiny report, but if that report sits on the shelf and none of the things in those reports are further, then that doesn't serve us well. In fact, I would say, in our moment in time, as a community, that would actually really set us back. And so this advancement team is really working toward pursuing these things and helping build partnerships throughout the community so that we can see results on these. You'll see that throughout the process, there are certain places where we need task forces. And then the timeframe that we had getting this done under, and under a year, with all the wisdom that Tim Kaufman has, still, we weren't able to be able to solve mental health issues in a three-month period. So there are times where we need to have more people at the table and take a deeper look. Things like literacy, mental health, other critical areas like that. We're also developing accountability strategies for the community so that we can see that there's progress on these areas and then communicate those progress, communicate that progress to the community. And what that does is not just keep us accountable, but the biggest thing here is a mindset shift. You know, I think if you could distill all of these action plans into one thing, it's that, you know, there's a desire to want to invest in our community and want to grow it. And how do you invite the whole community into that process? And by sharing these things, sharing the wins, sharing the real issues, I think that's an opportunity for us to bring more people along. And then finally, innovative funding strategies to support progress on these initiatives. We're thrilled to announce a couple of weeks ago that the Community Foundation has set five different funds up relative to these five focus areas. And a donor that we'll name soon has already committed $125,000 to these, 25 in each bucket, just because they wanted to see this thing get off the ground. And certainly, that's not all of the funding that will come in. And it will certainly be a public and private partnership in these realms. But we really have seen the private sector respond to this. And not just in the original fundraising to help fund the process, but in the continued implementation of these things as well. I'll invite Misty and Scott up here as well and submit to you guys for any kind of questions, thoughts, comments that you might have.
Well, first of all, on behalf of the commission, I want to thank Evan and Misty and Scott for being here today to give us a briefing or feedback on the Project Wichita. Sedgwick County is proud to have been a partner in helping fund this to help move it forward. As you look through the things that you found, are not a surprise to us, honestly. Because if you look at our legislative agenda, behavioral health is at the top of our list. Transportation, workforce development, economic development. Everything that you've talked about today are the things that we're looking at every day, trying to do what we can do from a Sedgwick County perspective to help move those things forward. So you really kind of validated some of the things that we thought were concerns in the community. Because now we know for a fact the community believes that we are heading in the right direction. So I appreciate that. And I'll open it up to the commissioners if they've got any questions or comments.
Hi, I'm so excited about this. Aren't you guys excited? My gosh, we should clap for all the work they did. I mean, really.
Well, the most exciting thing about this is that the community responded.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, that 14,000 number, I remember calling Misty the day that the survey closed and said, is this, is this good? I have no idea. I mean, you know, we've got certainly more than 14,000 folks in our community. And she said, yes, this is good. And I talked to another national expert who'd done things like this. I mean, all of these types of processes are unique in their own ways. But he said, what did you do? And I thought, oh, no, we broke it, like we, you know, we screwed it up. And he said, no, what did you do? Because the highest I've ever seen was Because the highest I've ever seen was about 6,000. And, and certainly that's a testament to Misty and her team and to testament to the vision team and the leadership of the, the co-chairs. But more than that, and I think more pointed is, that's a testament to where our community is right now. There are a lot of folks that care about the future of this community. You know, we would ask, I remember, you know, being at the, the Westside Spears, talking to the Westside Optimist Club, talking about the future of things and, and the question, asking them about what would keep your grandkids here? And just, you know, the, the ideas that came and it really engaged them in terms of the future. And so everybody engages these future issues differently, but what we saw in that number is there's just a tremendous amount of public care for where we are.
I know when I took the survey, it was a little lengthy, but I felt like it was worth my time, so I, I finished it out. But I just have a couple of notes. You know, as far as bringing people to our community, I think one thing, as far as, you know, a young person, I was a non-traditional student, but I'm still paying off my debt 10 years later. So I had an opportunity to work for a company out of Baltimore and I made a lot of money, right? And trying to come back into this community, I made half of the amount of money that I was making. So, you know, students, when they are racked with debt and riddled with debt, they want to leave to have a higher-paying job so they can pay it off. So I don't know how we fix that, but I think that that's something that we need to pay attention to. Also childcare, raising kids and paying for childcare. I noticed there's a scribbles and giggles or something going down, downtown, so that's kind of cool to have a place for kids to be. But just understanding, I love how you pointed out how young people want to work, you know? I mean, a lot of people that I talk to want flexibility. They don't want to go to an office from eight to five every day, you know? It just doesn't, I think those, those days are kind of dwindling away with students and young people who have multiple things. They drive Uber cabs, they have online stores, you know, they do lots of different things. So understanding that. And then to the literacy point, I really feel like we have to do more with parents because we're shuffled through a school system, right? We go through school, some of us go to college, some of us don't, and then we start working and we don't really understand how important it is to read to our children. And so maybe, yes, we need to focus on our kids, but focusing on those, those parents who really need to understand how it does impact their kids.
One of the issues we found in that, and specifically to that regard, is that there are some parents that, that aren't able to do that. And, and not just a time or, or book access issue, but just parents that don't have the educational ability to do that.
Yeah, yeah. And then the, from the community standpoint, I attend my neighborhood meeting every single week and it's always the same people and having younger people engage those other, you know, 30-somethings, 20-somethings in their own neighborhoods. And then at a student, at, at a school level, having students run the programs, finding those leaders, like the kids that were in here, the ROTC kids that were in here the other day, lead those programs. You know, when you see somebody doing it at your level, you're more apt to do it yourself. So having, having students run, engage other students. And then I love how you said, who's outselling our community? Because that was the number one question I had to somebody, who's outselling us? You know, as a sales rep for Kindred Hospice for a long time, you know, I had to go to 50 accounts a week to get one person to, you know what I'm saying? So I think it's important to understand who's outselling our communities. And finally, quality of place. As the Commissioner for District Four, we have a beautiful opportunity in Dunbar Theater. We have a beautiful opportunity in No More Market. I mean, those places have been really sort of not paid attention to from a commission standpoint. And I think as the Commissioner of this district, you know, working with those other community partners who have already been doing tons of work there, I mean, those are cultural hotpockets that we can learn from and grow and develop. So while I love that we're engaging our core of our city, we, there are some other really great places in this community that could benefit from resources that, that we might be able to find.
Scott mentioned the connected community piece. I mean, that's, that's really, it's, it's the region, yes, but it's also the different, just great cultural expressions we have within the city and the county and how do we make opportunities to, for more folks to experience those things?
You know, one of the things that, that I saw out of this process, and I've, I've said it repeatedly in our meetings, is it's really about communication. We have a lot of people who say, well, God, we don't have that here. When reality, we do have that here. One of the classic ones that I remember sitting in one of the meetings and listening to a group of younger people who really did embrace this process, saying, you know, if you get sick in Sedgwick County or the South Central Kansas region, you've got to go down to Dallas or Houston to get treatment. There is literally, I said, there's no trauma one care. We have two trauma one care facilities sitting right here in Wichita, but they didn't realize that. And so as we kind of delved into that, the reality was they looked at those facilities and said, well, that facility can't be trauma one. Look at it, you're going to have the Dallas and you see this beautiful campus, now that's got to be a trauma one. It's communication that we do have that. It may not look the same, but we do have that here in this area. And so I think 50% easily of this process is just communicating, making sure that our public knows that these, we do have these benefits in this area. And to your point, that, that's on all of us to be the salesperson for our region when we're out there talking, that, you know, we do have these things. They may not be the best, we're working on it, here's the plans, how we're going to improve those, but it's really communication. And you're right, the workforce is changing. With, with our, our younger people, they don't want to necessarily work an eight to five. I tell the story with our company, we were headquartered in Fort Worth, Texas. We closed that facility last year. All those people now work from their home. Over 50% of my workforce works out of their house. To your point, that's where they want to work out of. And we, we've seen exponential growth in our business because we're, we're allowing that flexibility. Now, if you're making something, you can have that flexibility, you've got to literally bolt something together. But there are a lot of jobs and, and I think businesses are starting to learn that, that you've got to have that flexibility because that's how our, our society works today.
And speaking for the sub-40 crowd, I don't think Scott's saying that the younger generations are lazy, right?
No, they didn't say that at all.
We're not, we just think that they, they're maybe innovative in their work habits.
Well, I think I just read a report that anybody over 30 shouldn't work more than four days a week.
As long as you get a job done, we really don't care about.
That was a joke, everyone. You were supposed to laugh, but I guess nobody got it.
Something doing four, that's fine. As long as you get your job done.
First of all, thank you Chairman. First of all, what job well done. I want to commend the, the process and the people. You did it very quickly and did a great job. The depth of the study is actually really well, is well done. I love the number of respondents, I think you had a great response from the community. So anyways, I want to start off with that. I, I see, you know, one of the things that's in the, one of the, one of the initiatives that's in here is the kickoff, the I Fly Wichita campaign. I'd like to commend you for that. I was at that event and that was very well done. And so it brings up a question in my mind, when people answer the survey questions, they may or may not understand exactly what is happening currently. So I'm just wondering about the qualified opinion. I want to know what the opinion, the unqualified opinion is perhaps, but when they have a little education about what's happening in Wichita, they might change their answer. So I'm wondering, but reading all these questions, you know, what was the level of understanding of the people who were answering the questions? I don't know if there's any, any reasonable way to do a follow-up question, but it does make me wonder, perhaps maybe salute, solution in some cases is education, letting people know what we are doing in the community rather than trying to solve the problem. Maybe the problem's already, has a solution in place. I mean, we're talking about expanding the, the routes by, I think eight more destinations is, is in the, is in the plans, I saw that on the, on the chart. And I think that there's a good news story there that people may not understand, they may think we're living in where we were 10 years ago.
Yeah.
And so I don't know if they have the understanding exactly of how it's changed in Wichita when they answered the question. Just, that's just one example. And I could actually ask similar questions on almost every survey question.
Sure.
I won't do that, but.
Sure.
So I guess my thought would be, to the level of understanding that they may have had when they answered the question, is there any, any comment about that?
Yeah, it's a great question. It's certainly something that would love to get inside the heads of somebody who's taking a survey. We tried to do that from education levels or neighborhoods or different things like that. But, but really, one of the things that Misty and her team did in this process is that when we got all that data back and we were working with those, you know, almost 100 leaders, it was really critical for us to bring in content experts in those meetings as well. So folks who are really keen on these particular issues in our region that could help to translate some of that data, it's just like you said, that, that qualified opinion, to make sure that that qualified opinion is, is there and present. Do you want to speak to that at all?
It's always a challenge, Commissioner, when you're doing a survey, right? Because everybody has a different thought process, different understanding background. The best we can do on any type of question is to make sure that it's reliable, meaning that people have the same, if you think of a cartoon, is that same picture bubble forming in everybody's head when we were asked that question? Are they all thinking the same thing? So we do pilot testing of the survey to make sure that's happening, went through that to make sure those questions are going to be reliable and consistently read by everybody.
One of the questions I have on, on page 14 of the, of the presentation, but when you defined the five focus areas, were those, were those something that developed as a result of the, of the, of the survey? Did we develop those five focus areas as a result of the survey or were those, were those predetermined? So we want to look at these five areas and the, the people who spoke about these or dug into these had access to the data. I'm just curious, were these predetermined or were these based on what we found in the data?
Sure.
They were based on what we found in the data, so.
Very good, very good. That's why we shared with you the five, the eight broad topics coming out of the focus groups and how those were further refined in the process through the, the surveys and and obviously places where, you know, you, you added, you know, some of the eight broad areas are kind of now under a bigger umbrella, things like lifelong learning, so.
The focus, the focus groups, again, listen, focus and share. So we're in the, I'm talking about the focus part. Did they meet multiple times and, and really spend a lot of time at that or how, what was the process they used to define their initiatives and their strategies?
Sure. So they each met at least four to five times, some met more. Some brought in, they all brought in contact experts to be a part of that conversation as well. Some brought in guest speakers to, to get more information about that. So each one had a little bit different flavor, but in general, they did that. They spent time delving into the data, bringing in more research. So it was a really intense process during that, that time period of how they went about looking further into those topics to figure out what would really be the most important strategies to come out of that work.
Misty's team did a good job of, of aggregating reports and information together and kind of giving homework to those, to those groups that, to the extent there are reports and things that are existing in these areas that have been, come out of the last several years that, that, that their information would be accessed there too.
So the, the most important question probably is, what do we do now? We have some great data, what's the strategy to implement that data in some, who's got, who's got the ball? I don't know who's doing what and what's our strategy to move forward in the next step?
Yeah, that's a great question and, and frankly, the critical element of all of this. And it, this is a process, as you can see, we went after the real issues. We didn't go after just checklist things that we could, that we could do and celebrate. We went after some of the complex things and like any complex thing, we have to share the ball. And so, you know, one of the things we're working on with the advancement team is, is building those partnerships with different groups. So example, you know, meeting with DA Bennett and his, and his extreme excitement about moving toward mental health issues, you know, making sure that we get the right kind of trajectories through these task forces. And certainly there are some things that are owned by particular organizations. For example, with regard to literacy, Kansas Health Foundation is launching a major campaign here in the next couple of weeks. And the partnership is working on, on talent issues and the chamber is working on some talent and diversity and inclusion issues. Other communities are coming together. So, you know, it, in terms of who owns each, each context, you know, those are conversations we had as focus teams. And so we can go through the report and kind of put a couple of names on, on each of these pieces. There are some that will be inherently shared. And so we're going to fuse those partnerships together now and, and timelines and, and what things we can do first and what things we can do second. Again, taking that five-year look at these things, seeding it with funding as well.
So now that you got the study done, will the Project Wichita organization and structure continue to, I should say, define those strategies and to find out who's got the initiatives and track that going forward? Is that, is that part of the plan still?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, you know, this is a scenario where Project Wichita as a, as a coalition or as a partnership can't go up to the YMCA and say, and now you do this, right? It's, it's more of a shared vision and shared coordination. And so we're having those types of conversations now. So for example, Misty mentioned anchor institutions. So we're looking at the, okay, what kind of assets do we have? And the why, and Ron McMahon under his leadership is very enthusiastic about that and, and using the why as infrastructure for these types of things regionally. So it really depends issue by issue, but we're working furiously now to fuse those partnerships and bring people along.
Is there, is there any data on the diversity of respondents? In other words, where they live, income status, marital status, family status, occupation type of, is there that data available?
We don't have occupation, but we do have marital status, income levels, geographic, my zip code information, whether they had kids in the home, their gender, race, all the kind of standard demographic information. And we had such a high response rate, we can break that down in a lot of different ways.
I would like to see that, that, if it's available, I'd like to see that at some point, but.
That's online, projectwich.org. There's a lot of that we've, we've published online, some of which is in your reports here, but obviously you can't.
I'd like to see that. The break, one of the things I'm interested in specifically is the breakdown of the region of where the respondents were from. I mean, I assume this came outside the city of Wichita, but were they outside the county? Were they, you know, it'd just be good to see some of that, some of that data.
Sure.
But anyway, thank you for that. Thank you for a great job and I'll stop talking, but appreciate all your excellent work on this project.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
One more comment there, this for Commissioner House's benefit. We will be discussing this document again as we go through our strategic planning process. And also you'll get a lot of that, a lot of those items that they talked about today are right in our wheelhouse on budget discussion. And we're getting ready to start that process with a retreat next week and then that four month process of budget. So we will be revisiting a lot of these items again through those processes.
That's good. We stand at the ready to help you.
Commissioner Mancher? Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Couple, and obviously, great stuff, way to take it all and get it into a bottle, the lightning. But a couple of questions, maybe Scott, you mentioned you're, you're involved and I know, I know you're involved with the weekly and some of the, the people that are kicking our tires, knocking on our doors to move here or to expand here. So I assume, I know we were involved in develop, further developing the Opportunity Zones documents. So is that process still, I mean, are we shipping out Opportunity Zone info around the country?
We're talking about that. The Opportunity Zones, don't waste it, all the opportunities that are looking to move into this area and stuff. What I was really referring to there was, as I talked in, because I'm a manufacturer and I'm talking to manufacturers.
Yeah, okay.
I touch a lot of manufacturing with the business I have. And as a visitor to our facility here, I have those CEOs go, why haven't we ever looked at Wichita?
Right.
Could we move to Wichita? Could we put our, our ware handling in Wichita or could we put manufacturing in Wichita? And so I think Opportunity Zones are going to become an important piece for us there as we do report, but I can't say that I've seen one quite yet. But these are usually larger operations. Last week I had a, a company looking at 300,000 square feet under one roof. I mean, these are large opportunities that are looking at us.
Yeah, and the manufacturing would be located outside our Opportunity Zones that were approved. But I think our window is, as we know, is short.
Right.
Certainly have an opportunity with the east bank of the river there as an Opportunity Zone. It's rare that you have such, such a placement in, in other communities if you look across the country.
Yeah, and the area that Lacy was just mentioning is in the Opportunity Zone for, so that would help some of these cultural and other, or residential, whatever. So the other question is, I know we've had a little bit of activity on, on international investment that's wanting to come into the, the whole country. And I, I saw you made reference to its, where it belonged to some, some group on whatever it is, page 15. So I would encourage that, because a lot of the, from what I've understood, a lot of the international companies, they don't even have any idea. have any idea. They just want to come to America and then they don't know the value of each community and...
Again, I think that's all, it goes back to where I talk about communication.
Right.
I think our international people understand it a lot better than we give them credit for. I remember the day when we did our Japanese joint venture, I was sitting with the chairman of the board, and he pulls out the chart, and we've all seen the chart, of after the recession of 2008, where here's Tulsa growing, here's Oklahoma City, and here's poor Wichita down here. And he pulls that out and lays it out. I'm thinking, oh, here we go. He's not going to want to be in Wichita because he's got this data. He looked at that data and he says, you know, I want to be in Wichita because you will have a workforce. These other cities that are back in growth, it'll be hard for us to get a worker, workforce around. So we want to locate in Wichita. What we internally see as a negative document, he saw as a positive document. And I think we've got to change our mindset in this community to really see that what we think is negative is not necessarily negative to the outside.
Totally. A good point, good point. My last comment is that you make reference on the highlighting the elephant in the room, the future of century two in that area. But I'm really glad that you make performing arts, it is one of our great fabrics. And you've got that first. And then as a convention, regional convention center, I mean, those are kind of cookie cutter type of buildings. So I know everybody, there's a lot of emotion around the building, but I don't know how you can do what you said there, state-of-the-art, world-class performing arts and then a regional, I don't know how that ever would fit into that, under that blue roof. But, so I know that conversation's going on. But I'm glad that you recognize it and it's out there, that if we're going to show off our great fabric of performing arts in this community, we got to, it deserves a great facility. So...
I think what Project Wichita showed, and remember, it's 100,000-foot level, is that, you know, that is important. It wasn't Project Wichita to say, we do this, or we do that, or we do this, whatever. It is something we need to address, whatever direction it goes.
Right.
So we know we're looking at the right things. The community believes that something needs to happen there. And so now let's push that down, let's get the action on that. And going back to Commissioner Howell, your question about how does this thing move forward, in the last slide, you had the advancement teams that are being put together. Those are the teams that are really going to drive these various areas to make sure that they continue to move along and we continue to get that feedback that we're advancing, moving it down the road. So that's really the action plan going forward. And those advancement teams, correct me if I'm wrong, Evan, are just right now being formed out of who's in those areas. Naturally, the players that are in those various sections will be the ones that will be part of those advancement teams.
And this has been a process that is, you know, it's unique to every community, but we wanted to make sure that we follow where the data goes. And so we didn't pre-build a process here. And so, you know, it means that we're building each step before we take it. And sometimes that makes it slower, but I think it makes it more honoring to the community's desire.
And I missed it, or I might have been, what was the, did you guys come up with the name of the baseball team?
Narrowed down to six, I hear.
Okay.
That was a survey question, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any of the staff have any questions? Again, Evan, Misty, Scott, thank you very much for being here this morning. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you have the desire. But I understand you all have busy days and you're welcome to leave if you wish.
Well, thank you. Thank you to the county and to the commissioners for your early investment in this. And in particular, thanks to Tom for his continued investment and Tim for his expert voice in all of this. So the county has been well represented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, Mr. Manager, what else you got?
Looking at the clock, sir, I'll defer to you to go with other. And then if we have some time, I think I can catch agenda review just in my weekly meetings with you all. There's not much on next week's agenda, so I'll defer that away and let you go to others.
Good. Well, I think deferring the agenda review is probably a good idea. Do we have other questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Howell, did you have a question on the fire station?
I did. I asked when this was presented a few weeks ago, or how long ago it was, about a two bay versus a four bay. And I got the data back. Basically, the answer is $153,000 difference. Is that the right number, I believe? That's the right number. So that's a calculation based on square footage, not based on an architectural plan necessarily. But it's a pretty good ballpark number to have a discussion. I guess my perspective is, you know, the fire district is continuing to have financial concern. I don't, even though it's doing better right at the moment, it still has projections to go underwater in the future. I think we need to be vigilant to be careful with the dollars in the fire district. They currently only house one piece of equipment part of the year and two pieces of equipment part of the year. Based on that, I'm not suggesting we would have one long bay with two pieces of equipment nose to tail, but I would suggest we'd have basically the same width of a bay and four doors bringing the equipment straight through. That way you pull out whichever piece of equipment is appropriate for the call. It could be there year-round. But this is a station that is not too far from Colwich. And then there's another station just to the east of that. And then there's also one in Goddard. So you're literally only about six miles from, you know, if you call from the farthest distance, you'd be about six miles from a fire station. I think that having two pieces of equipment would be very good. And we don't actually have any plans at this point of doing anything with EMS within our fire department, fire district. So that's not an argument I think that we should be using to go towards four bay. But the difference from between building on site at the Public Works yard and going to a new site and going from a four bay to a two bay, the difference is about a $2.1 million project down to about a $1.5 million project. I think that's enough difference that, maybe my numbers aren't exactly right. But it's about a half million dollars between the two choice differences. And so trying to be vigilant and produce a world-class, state-of-the-art, 21st century facility that looks great and meets the needs of the community, we can do that. And I don't know that we need to actually have four bays. I think that if we build four bays, two bays will be unused probably for a very long time. So anyway, I would advocate for us to have a conversation amongst commissioners and give some direction to staff at some point, find a consensus if possible. And hopefully, they would know whether they should be designing a four bay or designing something that's a two bay and whether they should be looking for land in the community, you know, purchasing a couple of acres if that's where we head versus reconstruction there at the Public Works. I understand Public Works would also like to receive that building that we're currently in. They would have use for it so it won't go to waste. It would be something they would use on their own property. So we have two choices ahead of us, and I don't know when to make those choices. But to the extent that they're trying to develop architectural drawings and start moving forward, I think we ought to have a discussion about two bay versus four bay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have an idea, say, five or 10 years from now, if we build a two bay, what it would cost us to add on and build a four bay?
Tony, I want to hit the... Commissioner, we looked at that yesterday with target statistics, just to get an idea of what it would cost to later at some point add those two bays. I foresee back a number of about $221,000 to add on those two bays at a later point. And that's to do that in 2019. So the further that you go out, we always add a 3% inflation on top of that.
Okay. Well, I understand that we are trying to be good stewards of the funding out there. One of the things that Commissioner Howell says to me quite frequently is that the commissioner knows his district better than everyone else's, than the other commissioners. But by the same token, all five of our commissioners, even though we're elected to represent one area, we have broad responsibility to make sure that we do what's right for the entire county, not just for our district. And I would hope that the commissioners would understand that whatever we build today is going to be something that we're going to look at for the next 50 years. The location that we're talking about building this is up in Andale, near Mount Hope. Mount Hope currently has a volunteer fire department, and that volunteer fire department serves several of the townships also. If I was to look into a crystal ball right now, it's a little fuzzy. But I would say that in the future, the possibility of a very small town like Mount Hope being able to continue to sustain a volunteer fire department into the future is probably not a great possibility. And at that point in time, we need to be able to make sure that we can pick up that responsibility. In addition, the next closest fire station that Commissioner Howell mentioned is over in Colwich. And once again, Colwich's fire department is a volunteer fire department. It's not a full-time professional fire department. And do they have an opportunity to continue to provide the service to their community without us having to pick it up in the future? In addition, we do have two pieces of equipment out there, not one. We have two pieces of equipment. We keep an engine and a brush truck out there. And we need to be able to get both of those vehicles out depending on what the situation is. Also, in the future, we have to make sure that we're mindful of the growth in that area and what is the possibility that we may have to co-locate an ambulance out there to support EMS. And if we don't have the bays in order to put an ambulance in, that's not an opportunity. So I would certainly understand the concern. I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. I don't want to say that we're going to save $153,000 today and it's going to cost us $200,000, $300,000 in the future. In addition, restrict our ability to grow and do the things that we need to do to provide services to our citizens out in western Settling County. So I would certainly hope that our commissioners take a look at all my concerns of how that my district is growing and reflect on that before that they make any rash decisions. So anything else that we need to bring up before the commission today?
Since we're talking fire district, I had sort of a disturbing conversation with someone about diversity and inclusion in our fire district. And I wondered how we go about getting some training for our fire department.
Certainly. We have an interview, and we have a director of our safety folks here.
Specifically, can you be more specific or...
What sort of training opportunities do we have to teach people about other cultures? If we're going into someone's home and they're not, I just think we need to be aware of maybe some concerns.
Do you want to speak to the training your folks receive? Yeah, go over there. Specifically, diversity-type training and...
Hello, Commissioner Doug Williams, interim fire chief. We've been hosting some classes. Last year, I believe it was last year, we hosted a Hispanic language class, teaching more of those classes towards our folks, working to the language barriers and we're identifying our people that have that ability on an individual basis. So that if we need them on an alarm, we can get those people on that day there. And we work with the county's human resources to do our diversity training also in-house. We train all of our new recruits. We go through the diversity training when they're hired. And, but we continue to support those language barrier classes pretty heavily.
So like the oldest person who, the longest person who's been here has had training? When? But they were hired, they've been here 20 years. When was the last time that they've had training?
The mandated training would have been a while.
Could you possibly look at doing it again?
Sure.
Commissioner, just your more global question of how do we initiate training for certain segments of the organization? That question always starts with HR.
Okay.
We ask, and HR provides training guidance and some actual trainings to all of the divisions within the organization. So anytime a constituent or someone you talk to has the question, that always starts with Sheena. And then Sheena works with the divisions to set up whatever kind of training is necessary. And clearly, the makeup of our fire district and ours is not different than other fire departments. The diversity lacks in fire departments, male-dominated, generally white-dominated. And so we can always do better and we should always be aggressive and proactive in how we train. But the question always starts with HR.
Cool. Thank you.
I might add that former chief, before his retirement, was very active in trying to promote inclusion and hire for diversity and promote for diversity, obviously based on merit. But as we move forward and look for a new fire chief, those types of qualities are going to be expected in that fire chief, to be able to communicate, to look to diversify. We have a fairly young fire department. We've had a lot of retirements. We have a lot of folks coming on board. And we want to make sure that we're hiring folks who understand and respect the value of diversity. And we want to make sure that we have, to the best of our ability, that we're hiring folks who are interested, who come from diverse backgrounds so that we, you know, we represent the community that we serve in the county.
So just to be clear, I'm not saying that we're not doing a good job. I'm not saying that. I had a conversation that brought up the topic, so I just wanted to make sure and bring it up in this setting to see kind of what we are doing. So please don't take this as me not going to us doing a bad job.
No.
I just want to open the dialogue and see like where we're at with this and how we go about it. So I'm excited to learn more about the process.
It's a very fair question, and it should be asked, because we need to be mindful of it.
Any other questions? Before I open it up to the staff, you know, we're getting ready to start doing our strategic planning process here in the near future. And one of the things that I've been trying to do to get ready for the strategic planning process is to take a look at different leadership models and so forth. When we toured Cargill the other day, one of the rooms that they have in Cargill is called the Legacy Room. It's based on a book about leadership with a rugby team. And it's an interesting book. If you all have a chance to read it, it's very short. It doesn't take too long, but it gives some perspective. Another book I took a look at the other day was one on the five best decisions the Beatles ever made. Sounds like a strange book, but it really is a pretty good book. And it has, it's even quicker to read, and it's entertaining, but it does have some things to think about. Also here, coming up, at the chamber chairman's luncheon coming up, I understand that they're going to be doing some discussions on this book called Multipliers. And I've started reading that. I haven't finished it yet. But it's probably one that makes you think more than the other ones, because it talks about multipliers. That's the main theme. Who are those people, those leaders, that multiply the efforts of their organization? By the same token, is there are diminishers in organizations. And these are the people that are in leadership positions that diminish the organization. And they may not even, they are accidental many times on being diminishers. But it's kind of a thought-provoking book. And if you all have an opportunity, especially as we get ready to go into the strategic planning process and you want to take a look at some different ideas on, first of all, leadership. And I know the strategic planning process isn't all about leadership, but it's going to give us the framework that the leaders are going to be acting on in order to be able to move this organization forward in the next couple of years. So just a thought, if you all are interested in taking a look at some good books, why, those are several that might be options for everyone to take a look at. Anyway, commissioners don't have anything else? Does the staff have anything that we need to talk about today? Electeds?
I know that a lot of you have worked with Debbie Rogers, the deputy treasurer, for several years. And she's going to retire August 1st. So I want to introduce Ben Cisano, who's going to be replacing Debbie. And he's got a lot to learn. But I told him you guys are all very nice and knowledgeable, and we will help him in whatever way we can. So welcome in.
Very good. You're welcome. We know him from past experiences, working with some folks. So thank you. Sheriff, we got anything today?
Nothing of mention today, sir.
Very good.
Law recital's going to be a lot back to city.
Very good. Those of you that know Dion Leffler, know that on Saturday, he went in for some emergency surgery. This morning, I got an email and it said that he does not have a tumor. What he had was an infection on his brain. It's going to be treated with some antibiotics for the next three weeks, trying to get him well. So we wish Dion speedy recovery. Hope no one else has anything this morning. We'll go about our business. Thank you all for being here today.